Good evening and welcome to the September 9, 2020 work session of the Penfield Town Board. I'll officially call the board meeting to order. We apologize for running just a couple of minutes late. I think just making sure all of our technology was working perfectly. And now that we've got that, I will officially call the meeting to order. And at this time, I would like to read our official statement into the record. Due to COVID-19 virus and the closing of the town operations consistent with the governor's executive order, the September 9, 2020 Town Board Work Session Meeting will be held remotely via Zoom. This meeting is also video recorded and broadcast live via the town's website at penfield.org, on the town's government access cable channel 1303, and on streaming media device that includes Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire. Search your Penfield TV in your device's app store. This is a free app. The meeting will later be transcribed. Any questions regarding video coverage, please contact Penfield TV at 340-8661. I will let the minutes reflect that we have four board members here tonight. We have Councilman Moore and myself in the auditorium. Online via Zoom, we have Councilman Bob Ockton and Councilwoman Debbie Draw, and Councilwoman Linda Cole is absent this evening. Additionally, here in the auditorium, we have our Director of Planning, Town Engineer Mark Valentine. We have our Development Services Director Jim Costello. And of course, taking our minutes and making sure we have a complete record of tonight's proceedings is Deputy Town Clerk Sue Scheit. So with that, Board, you have before us the August 26, 2020 minutes of our last work session. I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move it, Mr. Supervisor.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Andy Moore, seconded by Councilman Ockden. I'll ask the Board, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockden.
Aye.
Four ayes.
Thank you. This brings us to monthly reports. We have until Friday to get all of our monthly reports in. Happy to report that most all of the monthly reports are in. So thank you to our department heads for getting all of that material in, updated for the Board for their awareness and information. So thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. We do not have any guests this evening. We'll move right into our action items. The first action item is lodge rental fees. And tonight joining us and soon to be on the screen is Andrew Erkfits. Andy Erkfits is our Acting Director of our Recreation Department and has a proposal for the Board to consider. And we'll wait as Andrew joins us.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Hey, Andy, how are you? Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for the information. The floor is yours for an update as it relates to the lodge shelter fee proposal. And the Board has all the materials that you submitted, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. So really, in terms of the lodge fees, when we're looking at it, it's more of a customer service thing. We're looking to condense the amount of fees that we have available to residents and non-residents right now. Right now, if you're a non-resident or resident, if you go online, if you do it in person, there's a 10% discount. If you use the lodge on a weekday, a weekend, or even Thanksgiving as a holiday, there's all these different rates, and that comes out to be 36 total rates. And that's 36 opportunities for people to have options, which it's always nice to have options. But we see it kind of as something that deters people when they call in to make a decision. So we're looking to kind of make this a little bit more straightforward and condense it down to just 10 rates. When looking at the current rates that we have, I looked at our 10% online fees that we charge just because usually most people are doing it online. They'll call in for help, and again, they'll ask for what the rates are. And when we tell them that the rates to do it in person is a little bit more than online, it does push them to go online, which is nice. But I do think most people are going online just for the convenience of being able to do it at home. So with that, when I looked at the proposed rates, I wasn't trying to increase or decrease, just trying to keep a nice average in that middle area. So you can see the form. Most of the rates kind of sit right where we charge between a weekday and a weekend. So it's pretty consistent with what we're already charging. So residents and non-residents won't have hopefully too many issues with the proposed fees. Then also looking at some of the other towns around us. We looked at what they're currently charging, and the proposed rates really just sit right in the middle, if not a little bit on the low end for lodges around that are comparable in terms of capacity with ours being able to hold 99 when the time comes and we are able to hold 99 and not restricted to last and also the time of day. So if anyone has any questions, let me know.
All right, Andy, thank you. From time to time, we have made some modifications to our fees. If I recall correctly, the last time we had this conversation may have been about three years ago, roughly, as we went through and made some adjustments. And as Andy has said, there is certainly a lot of options. And I think what Andy and his team has been looking to do is to stream that a little bit more. So I'll ask the Board, any specific questions for Andy as it relates to any of our proposed rates, either for a resident, a non-resident, whether our shelter is enclosed like Dolomite in Harris Whalen, or if it's one of our shelters that we have at Philbrick Park Veterans Memorial, Harris Whalen?
Andy?
Go ahead.
Andy, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
So I know, so you did say that most people, you know, they're doing it more for convenience, this dropping the online piece. So would, for example, you know, so I kind of agree. I kind of like your streamlining it, just one, you know, one rate, whether you're doing it in person or online. I think that's a, that's a plus, as long as you're seeing that the majority of people really you have booking these are mostly about, is it, what's the percentage you get for online, that booking online right now?
It's close to like 80%.
Oh, okay.
And I'd say even that 20% is mostly people that have too many options and they came in. Obviously, we're in a different time where people aren't coming into the building to do that. So that's why we're hoping to streamline a little bit more for the online piece and just making it consistent across the Board.
Gotcha, okay. Are we still doing it? Whether you have just, you open in January for the post-premium spot, you know, you can, January 1st of the following year, you book it?
We open it, we open it online and in person in early December. And in the past, we didn't restrict resident and non-resident. We do plan on having on December 2nd, it open it up to residents only, and then non-residents starting January 1st.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Andy. Other discussion or questions for Andy?
I think this is a good approach. I think streamlining makes a lot of sense for a lot of different reasons. But I think even as Andy just mentioned, the pandemic situation that we've been dealing with, it just seems like this is a good plan. Thanks for putting the work into this, you and your team. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments at this time, I would look for a Board member to move that we move forward with these new rates. Upon that motion, second and vote, we would ask Andy to put a Town Board resolution in for our next meeting of the Town Board, which will be the 16th, and will formally adopt this new fee schedule and make it part of our overall record. So with that, I would entertain a motion of approval for what Andy has proposed.
I'll move that, Mr. Supervisor.
Second.
New lodge rental fees scheduled?
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Debbie Draw, seconded by Councilman Ockden. And I'll ask one last time, any additional comments before we call the vote? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Draw.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockden.
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, and Andy, if you would, if you have any questions, certainly reach out to Lisa. She can assist with any resolution that we put this together. We'll get it on the agenda. Needs to be in by noon on Friday. So thank you for your efforts, and we'll get this in place. And are you looking to make this effective January 1st so that as we start our online in December and lodge rentals starting January 1st? Is that when you plan on starting, or are you proposing to do that sooner?
I believe the way that the system would work is that we would have it start on December 2nd, just because that is when we would open up for 2021 lodge reservations. And there's not a way to cut it to say only do reservations between for January 2021. So some of those December dates after the 2nd, if someone would come in and reserve last minute for a December date, they would get those new rates.
Okay.
So that would be in effect.
All right, very good. Okay, so I think we're all set. Andy, thank you for taking your time to join us this evening. And with that, we'll let you get on to other business at hand this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you. Okay, we will next move on to Action Item B. This is the Howitt Bayview LLC request for site plan approval at 1211 Empire Boulevard and a portion of 41 Wilbur Track Road. And as our team downstairs are bringing in the representatives from Howitt, for Howitt, I'll ask Mr. Costello to give us a brief snapshot update of any materials that he's received, any input feedback that he's received, anything else he would like to add to this application.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I did receive two emails. One requesting clarification of the use of incentive zoning as it related to this project. The other asking for an update is to the status of the remaining 20-plus acres of land that Dr. Howitt proposes to leave undeveloped at this time. And other than that, I've not received anything else to date.
All right, thank you, Mr. Costello. I'll, I note that Jess Sudal from Pastoral Associates is at least on the call here with, via Zoom. And I'll, now I see Dr. Howitt in as well, and I think his architect. So with that, Jess, Dr. Howitt, I just recognize both of you. Anything new that you would like to make the Board aware of on this particular application? And I see Sebastian as well has joined in. So Jess, I'll recognize you first, and then anyone else on the Howitt team.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As the Board members may recall, we did, or we've appeared before this Board several times. Most recently, I forget if it was in July or August, but since then, there have been those substantial changes to the site plan. Prior to that meeting, we did make, you know, several changes to the plan based on the Board's and staff's input over the last several months. Most notably, changing the configuration of the building, providing lines of site studies to ensure that we wouldn't have any impact to those single-family homes to the south and west of us, providing some covered parking in the area behind the building. We did move the building further back off of both Wilbur Track Road and Empire Boulevard, which also allows us to provide some land for the adjacent K2 Brewery to potentially provide some overflow parking. So that was a compromise that we came to while working through this process. And also, I want to do point out that we continue to include the significant turn lane improvements on Empire Boulevard as part of this project. But again, all of that's been previously presented to this Board. We'd be happy to answer any additional questions. But since the last time we presented, you know, I think the only substantive change, if you know, wasn't really a change, was just Mr. Howitt's clarification that there is no intended additional use of this property or the property to the south of us as part of this proposal or any future proposals that we could imagine.
Okay, thank you. And as a courtesy, I would recognize Dr. Howitt as the developer, owner, developer of the property, if he has any additional input that he would like to add to this particular application.
No, it has been, it has been asked what the plans are for the old townhouse portion of the property. Those plans have been dropped. There is no intention of reigniting that plan at any time. Anything that may in the distant future be used done with that land will always be done with reference to the current zoning of the property. So that essentially rests as a, as hopefully an issue.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Howitt. Board, I'll ask any additional comments, questions at this time that anyone may have?
Mr. Supervisor, real quick, Jess, I guess this question is maybe geared towards you. The portion of the property that you have right next to the K2 Brewery that you alluded to as far as designated overflow parking, is that property that you're proposing that the owner would own and then work out some arrangement with them? Or were you turning that property over to K2 Brewery? What, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, our current intention is to provide them with a access easement, which would allow them to construct that parking as needed. So it wouldn't necessarily be a land transfer, or rather, an access easement for them to be able to build that property is what we've contemplated.
Okay, so Doctor, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to defer to Dr. Howitt if he had any plans or if I didn't state that correctly, just to make sure we're accurate for the record.
No, I think, I think you've said that correctly. And we seem to have concurrence that this was a good idea from K2 Brewery earlier on. I have not heard from them at all, one way or the other, really, since the onset of COVID-19 and restrictions of use of bars and restaurants. I'm assuming that as that eases their interest in the property use will again ignite itself, and it will be there for their use at that time.
Great, thank you, Doctor. Any other comments at this time?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, Councilwoman Draw.
So I guess maybe Jess or to Mr. Howitt. So, so I understand that, so you were letting them use that property, those parking spots for them to use, you know, as they seek that overflow for their facility. If at some point you deem that the apartment complex, the apartments need that extra parking, will you then rescind that and have, and take that, those parking spots back to for use within the apartment structure area?
I'm happy to answer that. You know, the parking code requires us to provide two parking spaces per unit, which we have provided to meet code. But based on our pretty lengthy experience with these types of developments, seeing that they're, you know, one and two-bedroom units with some threes, you know, that parking ratio is significantly higher than our anticipated parking demand. So with having two spaces per unit, we're confident that not only are we going to comfortably satisfy our own internal parking demand, but we'll also have ample overflow parking for any visitors that may be coming to our site. But I don't envision any scenario where we would not have enough parking for our residents as current.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess, is the parking lot that you're proposing a lit parking lot? And if it is a lit parking lot, are you planning on using dark sky compliant lighting for that?
Well, very simply, yes and yes.
Okay. All right, seeing no other comments at this time, I'll just ask Mr. Costello, is there anything that we should make sure is into the record that hasn't been already added to the record at this time?
Just one question, Mr. Supervisor, to Dr. Howitt. We did talk about the five-acre parcel on the top of the hill at the end of Old Westfall Road. And I know you've made an offer to the County Parks Department to take that land and incorporate it into Lucian Moore and Park. And I know we did talk a little bit about this at the public hearing. But if the county decides that it does not want that land, there are some people there at the end of Old Westfall Road that might be interested in obtaining that land from you. Is that something you'd be supportive of looking into?
I'd certainly engage with anyone that had an interest in the land.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess it'd be for Dr. Howitt or Jess. Sometime back, I think you indicated kind of what the target group of renters that you were, you know, anticipating for this complex. Can you just reiterate that for me again as to, you know, what you expect? And granted, it could vary a little bit, I assume, but...
Yeah, well, I mean, Mr. Howitt can expand on this as well, but I would say it would be a pretty healthy blend of young professionals, whether that be single or young couples. They're not ready to move into a single-family home yet. And also, what we see a lot in this area, especially across the street, is empty nesters who have moved on from their single-family homes now that they've downsized, that are looking to have access to all the amenities of Veronica Bay. So kind of two age groups there is what we anticipate primarily. You know, again, young professionals and then key nesters.
Gotcha, okay, great. Just, Mr. Supervisor, a couple other comments, I guess, that I have tonight. I'm pleased to hear Dr. Howitt's statement, you know, regarding the additional acreage to the south. I know that's been an important topic for many, so I'm glad to hear that this evening. This project was going on longer than I've been on the Board, but I do, I did see the previous renditions. And I gotta say, I think the new look in that is definitely, I think it's improved. I like that it can fit the area. I still do have some, some struggle with the public safety aspect of the additional traffic that would be, you know, coming out of Wilbur Track Road. We've all traveled that road numerous times, and you see all sorts of things going on. So I know we're still, I think some of us have still had some conversations, you know, relative to that, that public safety aspect specific to traffic. It's, yeah, I'm sure, you know, what other answers there are. I know the state has redone the latest, you know, rendition, the turn lanes, et cetera. I just, I think there's still some conversation to be had there. I know we don't have a full Board this evening. And I think it would be important to have everyone present to discuss this, to take it to the next step. I would move that we, that we put this on the next session's agenda, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Ockden, seconded by Councilman Moore to table or hold this matter. Certainly, I'll respect that. I don't want to push this to a vote, that if this vote were a 2-2 vote, that's an automatic potential denial. And we want to make sure in fairness to the overall process that we give the full benefit to everyone. So with that, and seeing a formal motion on the table and seconded, I will ask for a roll call vote of that motion.
Draw.
Aye.
LaFountain.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ockden.
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, so next steps, this will be on the next work session agenda. I'll ask that Mr. Costello follow up with Jess and Dr. Howitt tomorrow more formally. And we'll have it back on the agenda in October. So seeing that, that will conclude the discussion on this particular matter, and we'll continue on with our action items. Jess, Dr. Howitt, Sebastian, and others, thank you for tuning in, and we'll make sure that we keep you updated and posted for our next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
We will move on to our third action item, Item C on the agenda, signed revision at 2118 Five Mile Line Road. And with that, I'll recognize Jim Costello. Mr. Costello, Development Services Director, has shared some information with the Board, and I'll ask him to give us a few words, and then we'll open it up for discussion. And then if we have the applicant that is looking to listen in and listen to this discussion, we'll have them as part of the Zoom meeting. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. With us this evening, we have Sebastian from Acadia CBD. He's been operating this site now for a couple of years, I believe, or a year and a half. He came to me a few weeks ago asking that he be allowed to change the sign. And Mark, you can move it down to what he's proposing. He'd like to insert that sign in place of the existing sign. And I'll, Sebastian, I'll let you talk a little bit about why you want to do that and what the intent is.
Perfect. Should we switch on the video, or is the shot just fine?
The shot's fine.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Yeah, so we've started to self-creatum, which is, which we get imported from Southeast Asia, primarily Indonesia, though it's also found in Malaysia. And there's many negative connotations that you can find with cratum, but we'd like to rely on research. And according to research from our backyard, University of Rochester, which has done extensive studies on it, it shows that it's extremely effective treatment for pain. And for those that are using it to treat opiate withdrawal, 87% of people have reported positive results. So it's not something that people are using, you know, to get intoxicated, but it's rather something people are using to get off of traditional opiates, be that, you know, pills, or, you know, even to the extent of even harder heroin. And of course, you know, in Rochester, upstate New York, and the Rosberg as a whole, there's been a serious pandemic, epidemic rather, related to opiates. And I, according to the research, which can also be found from Johns Hopkins, it shows that where the cratum should have a greater profile in the United States, especially in the places that need it most, there's very little risk associated to using cratum in the short term or long term. And the benefits are just so extraordinary. And from what I've seen in, you know, in my personal life, my brother actually used cratum to get off opiates, which he had been on for nearly 10 years. He found cratum, and within a short time, he was luckily able to, you know, get his life untracked there. And taking more even from the research, it shows that after a year of people using cratum, 35% were actually off of those traditional opiates. So from the research and from what many doctors are saying as well, cratum's a great alternative for people that are suffering, not just from problems related to opiates, but with depression, anxiety, as well as sleep aid. You know, we have many people coming in that have trouble sleeping, especially with the, of course, coronavirus pandemic. Anxiety is all the time high, depression is all the time high. And those are really the top reasons for why people are using cratum. They're coming in more so for the anxiety, depression, and even broader, the pain relief. I would say that, you know, nine out of 10 customers are using it to treat pain rather than for an opioid alternative. And once you get off opiates, it's... And once they get off opiates, it's fifteen or so, a lot of people that have used opiates and they have not had success with it. Luckily, they found Kratom, which is, of course, it's related to the coffee plant. So any dependence that people gain from Kratom is going to be similar to a dependence on coffee, which, you know, I'm sure many of us drink multiple times a day. So any dependence that people gain, it's not any more psychoactive, psychoactively addictive than coffee. And it's very much related to it. And, you know, there are twenty-five different strains of Kratom, even more so that I can delve into. Some of them are going to be great for pain. But even on the opposite end of the spectrum, some of them are going to be very similar to coffee, you know, they're similar in upper, more so for using it in the morning till they get going in the day. And then, you know, a different strain such as a red is going to be more sedative and more directed towards pain. And we've got a lot of customers that are using it for Fido in Malaysia. I mean, you know, the list goes on. Really, the list goes on. I just really want to be able to promote it more, seeing that in my personal life as well as with customers. And it's really something that has changed many of their lives. We have customers that have, you know, of course, heard of CBD, hear of CBD a lot. Kratom's really, it's still not out there that much. And we've done a lot of remodeling inside the store. And, you know, from the outside of the store, we just put up a bench and we changed out that old AC, you know, which is rusted out. We just changed that this past week. So we've created a very nice holistic atmosphere. And, you know, that sign, you know, is starting out, this is, of course, not the prettiest sign. So it really just helped them to make things a little bit nicer with the new system.
Sebastian, so the sign as we see it that's up on the screen right now, Arcadia CBD, that'll be removed. And in its place will be just the simple CBD plus Kratom sign. No other reference to, you know, either Arcadia or anything like that. Just the sign as we see it right now on the screen.
Yep.
Okay. So go ahead, Councilwoman Draw.
Sure. Sebastian, the size of, is that six, so I see it's, is that eighteen or sixteen? I can't see on that screen.
I believe that is eighteen, it's eighteen inches in height and in length. And it's just the, it's the exact same as the...
As the, I see, that's my question, is that same size as the Arcadia CBD?
Yep, yep.
Gotcha.
So one of the things that I've heard asked is that, is Kratom legal in New York State?
Yep, Kratom is legal in New York State. There are only, you know, a handful of states where it is deemed illegal. And even so, people can cross borders and get it that way. Of course, if there's no tri-state or multi-state plan there, you know, it usually doesn't work out. So in New York State, they're actually trying to push for, which I agree with, an age limit to buy Kratom. So we don't let anyone under eighteen purchase Kratom. And we actually don't, we haven't teenagers, you know, young people that are coming in. But basic things like that, like regulating the age, really has to get passed in New York State. It's really falling behind for whatever reason. Of course, coronavirus has really taken precedence. But, you know, those are basic things that really have to get deployed that have not yet happened. But, you know, even so, we do uphold those basic regulations in our story.
Okay. All right. Board, other questions or comments?
So, Sebastian, one other question on under that sign. I can't remember because I know I come in that corner all the time. Is that underlit with, is there lighting above that or no?
Yep, yep. So wait.
Get this.
Oh, so it is, yep. There's a bulb there. And it's not on all the time, but sometimes it will be on at, in the evenings from, oh, I have it set from eight PM to around six or seven AM, but it's faulty, so it doesn't always go on.
Okay. And the lighted, okay, that's fine. Okay.
Sebastian, just a question as I'm trying to recall as I drive through there, you know, many times, but sometimes in a trance. Is there a freestanding sign that you put out there on a daily basis or some kind of regular basis?
Yep, we've got an A-frame that is directly in front of the store. Previously, you know, to gain more attraction, increase marketing, I did have an A-frame on the opposing side of four corners there. And, you know, since then, I've no longer had that. So we just have the one that's in front of the, just actually in front of the building.
All right. You put it out, take it down every day?
Yep, yep.
And I would just like to say thank you for keeping it in front of your store. I will put you on notice that if I go through and I find it someplace other than in front of your store, it'll be in a dumpster, just so we're very clear.
Yep, no problem.
Okay.
So, yeah, no problem.
All right. Very good. Other questions or comments for Sebastian regarding the proposed sign for the business?
Sebastian, I have one other question for you. So with the new sign, are you still going to always keep the sign in your window, the open and the other CBD in the lighted one? Will that be always there as well?
We plan to leave in the open sign, but I actually want to take down the CBD sign there, the neon one. I want to get like a nice white boutiquey thing that has Arcadia CBD Kratom, you know, a number else we want to put on there, just to make it look nicer, get the LEDs out. But, yeah, for the time being, we're going to be leaving the neon sign there.
Okay. But you, so you will have, you will have them taking the CBD out with a lighted? And then, so there will be no lighted in the window anymore?
Oh, yes. I don't have an exact timeline. I'm going to want, that's going to happen. But I do want to take it out and put something nicer in the window that's not lighted. Just to have it a cleaner look.
Not lighted. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, other questions, other comments? Board first, and then I'll recognize Mr. Costello.
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, I just want to make a couple comments. I believe I heard from Sebastian that this product is legal in the state of New York, which may be true. But my concern is that this product, for every ten articles you read that talk about its health benefits, there's ten articles that talk about how it's on the borderline of being an abusive drug by members of, you know, society and so forth. So I know the FDA, and Sebastian, correct me if I'm wrong, but the FDA does have some concerns about this product in the United States. And so I guess I'm not real sure where I feel on promoting this project or promoting this product in the Village of Penfield. I need to do a little bit more research. I may call the County Health Director and check with him on his opinion of the product. But unless, you know, unless I'm hearing something different, I would just propose that we hold off for, till another work session, two more weeks, so that the board can get a little bit more information about this particular product and what it's all about. Because I do believe that for every positive piece of literature that you read, there's just as many negative pieces of literature about this product as it stands today. So...
Am I allowed to comment as well then?
Sure.
Absolutely. Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, you definitely see a lot of negative stuff out there. Of course, you know, you don't want, the big part, they don't want this to gain more traction, essentially. And when you have people, opiates have been pushed to the masses. And when you have people, you know, essentially using something else, they're losing money. But essentially, what it gets taken down to is when eighty-seven percent of people, you know, experience fewer withdrawal symptoms and relief from this product, I think it's not something that you should block to people because they're going to get their hands on it anyway. It's something that, you know, it should be, I do agree it should be more regulated in terms of the age that should be in place to access it. But if anything, if you deny access to it, I mean, what's going to stop people from going to do their traditional, be it heroin or even oxycodone, which is more common, especially in white America, middle class, forties, fifties, women, men? That's really, you know, that's really a big problem too. It's eighty percent of people that use Kratom are college educated. Oh, when people come in through our doors, it's not what you would associate with those suffering from opiate use. You know, it's really people just like you and me that are your kids, your cousins, you know, that are suffering. And it's, again, it's not just used for opiate dependence. You know, of the top four things it's used for, number one's pain relief, two, anxiety, depression, three, and the last one's opie dependence. But if you just deny someone access to this, when using Kratom instead of heroin could change their life, you know, I think that's definitely a foul move, especially when the research in your backyard shows that it is very effective in treating opiate withdrawal symptoms with very, very minimal side effects. I'll definitely do some more research on that. From what I see with my customers as well, if you read through Reddit, where you will find a lot of the individual experiences with Kratom, you know, I can get you one hundred fifty, two hundred signatures, you know, when I dare to, for people that use Kratom every day, if they're going to get lots, or managing pain relief where others have not been able to. So, you know, if you just deny people access to Kratom, you know, they're still going to get it other places. Let's, you know, if they get it in other towns, what have you, you know, they might have to drive a little bit farther. But, you know, we would also be killing a business in the process. But, you know, of course, you'll do your research further.
Sebastian, could you, you bring up a point that I think is some value about in our own backyard. Can you provide this town board with that research by the University of Rochester that you've stated now twice, I think, tonight?
Yes, yes. So Mark Swatter, he's got his PhD from Chicago, met, he's done extensive research with fellow PhD individuals from, I believe, the University of Rochester. I can provide you the links of not just the articles from the University of Rochester, but a dozen or so universities, if you're right. Essentially, the studies, which they comb through sixty years of international scientific evidence on Kratom and show that from all the people that have taken it, you know, they obviously know. They comb out the specific reasons for, you know, anxiety or what have you that I've stated as well. But there's very minimal long-term and short-term side effects from the benefits.
Okay.
It's such, it really outweighs any negative side effects. So if people use, that can use Kratom, you know, to get off traditional opiates, essentially, if you can stop an opiate withdrawal, which I hope none of us have ever been through it, you know, I've seen people go through it. It's not a pleasant experience. But if you can stop that experience, because Kratom works on your opiate receptors. Essentially, it tricks your brain into thinking that you do have the opiates in your system. Your system, excuse me. You know, you're not thinking the opiate effects that you would traditionally think. And you can't abuse Kratom because it has a self-regulating system. But, you know, if you take more than nine grams or so, you're going to get a stomach ache. The effects really taper off. With Kratom, more is less, you know. The more you take, I'm sorry, the less you take, the more effect.
Right.
So when you take more and more, you can't abuse it. You're just going to get sick. The side effects are going to be terrible. So people limit how much they take because the less you take, the more effective it is.
Okay.
Maybe you can't do, you know, so...
So Sebastian, Sebastian, you'll get that information that Mr. Moore requested. You'll get that to Mr. Costello so that he can share that with the board. The sooner you, the sooner you get that, then the sooner we can take a look at that and take action on the proposed sign that you have. Mr. Moore, would you like to make that as a motion to hold this matter pending some additional information?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to make a motion here tonight in front of the board to hold this at least to the next work session, pending additional information from the applicant, and then allowing the town board to do a little bit more research on our own. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Supervisor.
Removed by Councilman Andy Moore and seconded by Councilwoman Debbie Draw. This matter will be held. I will let the record show that Sebastian will be providing some links for us to take a look at. And then we'll get this back on the agenda at our next work session to finalize. With that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Draw.
Aye. I'm sorry.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All right. Sebastian, thank you very much. As soon as you get that in, Mr. Costello will get that shared with the board. And then we can take a look at finalizing this application.
Thank you so much for your time. Enjoy the next meeting.
All right. Be well, be safe. Thank you very much. We'll move on to informational items. We have one informational item. This is to review the draft RFP for a CCA administrator. And before I recognize Mr. Valentine, I would just like to say that I want to give a special shout out to Sarah Kloster. Sarah is our junior engineer, works for Mark, part of our energy and environmental advisory team. She has been the internal member of our team that has been working on pulling together the information, not only from previous RFPs that have been sent out, but she's done a lot of research on other communities. And we met with the EAC. We put this on, this particular draft, and we're presenting it to the board through request of the board, following up from our adoption of a local law to create CCA here within Penfield. This is the next step. And with that, Mark, I'll recognize you and the work that Sarah and the EAC have done.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As Supervisor had shared, Sarah sent off last Friday a copy of the draft RFP that she's been working on. We've vetted this through the EAC Committee, met with them initially in August, and then most recently sent it off to them in September for their input. We've taken kind of an amalgamation between what is the best we've seen from a couple of different sources. Nicerda had copies. We've taken them up from Nicerda. And a couple other towns we've seen. And then locally, Town of Pittsburgh, Brighton, Aronacoid have been working on their own proposal. We've taken parts of theirs. We've kind of consolidated it together. But this is the next step, to go out for RFP, if the board is comfortable, to get an administrator to go out and get quotes to see if, you know, buying energy wholesale for the community makes sense. So this basically gets who the administrator would be. They have to submit their materials back to us. This board would, you know, vet out the proposals, who comes back. If you would like to, you know, continue, selected administrator. From there, you know, they would go out to the market and see what, you know, rates are out there currently and, you know, what does this make sense for Penfield? So that's kind of some of the next steps. I don't know if it's needed to go through it. It's kind of typical RFP, a stated qualifications of, you know, what we're looking for from them, laying out the scope of services we're looking for them to provide to us, some of the budget items. We'll see, you know, what, you know, we'll see for the residents, what their impact are, how they will handle questions that come in from the public, you know, how will they do communication and rollout of the program once we get to that point. And then we roll into exactly what we want the formatting of the proposal to look like, you know, how many copies we want to see, what style format to provide it in. And then, you know, some more of the details once we'll have to come up with an agreement with the administrator, once we get to that next level. So this kind of walks through that. I can walk through or, you know, highlight different sections with the board if you want to individually, but that's kind of a highlight of what the document is here. Obviously, we've left in yellow those dates. Obviously, those aren't fixed as of yet, you know, just sharing it with the board tonight. What your thoughts are, have some, you know, additional, you know, conversation, questions. And then if the board is comfortable, we penciled in that, you know, we would do an RFP to put it out on October eighth, make it available as an RFP at that point, take questions in by middle end of October. You know, people will submit their comments, questions in writing. And then, you know, look at, have proposals due, you know, by November twentieth is our potential. Then, you know, going through the vetting process of who we get the stuff from would carry us through the end of the year and then, you know, possibly to the beginning of next.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. As Mark has indicated, you know, certainly this is a very complete document. There are, as he mentioned, a few areas that are yellow highlighted. We can talk about specific dates. The purpose of tonight was to get this into the board's hand so that we did have this board. I would like us all to do a deeper dive. I've had the benefit of being involved as part of the EAC through this process. I know this is the first time that you've seen it here when Mark sent it out to the board. What I would encourage us to do is that between now and the twenty-third, our next work... next work session, uh, to take a look at it, if we have, uh, any questions, uh, Mark and certainly Sarah, who's done a tremendous amount of work on this, would be available for, uh, any comments. And then, if the board is comfortable, um, I would, uh, look to bring it back on the twenty-third, uh, at our work session, if we were comfortable that, uh, we had the I's dotted and T's crossed, uh, that, uh, our proposal would be to bring it to town board, uh, for a resolution authorizing that, uh, we go out for bid, that would be on the seventh, and then the document, uh, would be available for release on the eighth. And if that's the scenario, as, uh, Mr. Valentine had indicated, then you can follow down through, that, uh, there's a couple of weeks that it's in the hands of prospective bidders, uh, they have the opportunity to come together and, uh, ask questions, uh, by the twenty-second of October. Uh, we, um, have a Q and A addendum, uh, so that any question that comes in, regardless of who, uh, asks it, everybody gets the same answer, so no one has an advantage or disadvantage. And then, the proposals would then be due in, uh, on November twentieth, and, uh, what would happen at that point, uh, I would expect that the board would ask the EAC to evaluate, uh, put something together in a matrix form, and come back, uh, with, uh, thoughts or recommendations. Uh, so that's kind of a tentative layout, uh, of that, so I think, uh, two checks tonight from the board, uh, one, um, are you comfortable with taking the next couple of weeks, uh, to review this in more detail, and then come back, uh, at our, uh, meeting on the twenty-third, uh, to discuss further? Uh, would you like a little bit more lead time? And then, uh, certainly, if, uh, all works out, are we comfortable with moving forward, uh, issuing this, uh, proposal out, uh, to get, uh, bids, uh, and proposals back, uh, to us, uh, by the end of November?
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, I think the schedule you laid out is sufficient. Um, you know, I'd, I'd like to thank you for your leadership in getting us to where we are here today in moving, uh, this green energy initiative, uh, and green power initiative forward. Certainly, um, it goes without saying that, uh, you know, Councilman Bob Ockeden has been one of the leaders on this issue in, uh, in my conversations with Councilman Ockeden, he's been a strong proponent, um, of our commitment, uh, to green energy and sustainability here in the town, which we've got a great success, um, record, um, in providing that, uh, those level of services, uh, to the community here in Penfield, um, but also with this green initiative. We had a public hearing on this, uh, issue back in, I believe, early March, the first week of March, um, and just about every speaker, if not all the speakers that participated, were in strong support of the town board moving forward, uh, with the initiative that you and Councilman Ockeden brought forward, um, to where we are, uh, voting on that, uh, as a, as a local law, and then where we are today with the assistance of town staff moving forward and actually putting this out for an RFP. So, um, I support where we are, I support taking the proper steps, moving forward, making sure that it's done right, correctly, and legally through the RFP process, um, so there's no issues afterwards. Um, and again, uh, without the, you know, advocacy and the leadership by you, Mr. Supervisor, and Councilman Bob Ockeden, and supporting this green energy initiative, I don't think we'd be where we are today, and certainly, the community has come out very strongly with different advocacy groups, um, supporting Councilman Ock- Ockeden's, uh, perspective and supporting you, Mr. Supervisor, in getting us to where we are today through the, through the public hearing, through the, uh, enactment of a local law, and then ultimately, what we're doing right now and moving forward with an RFP to, to make this to fruition. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion or comments this evening on this matter?
Mr. Supervisor, I, I agree, I think, uh, there's quite a bit here in this, um, in this RFP, I did have a chance to, to get through it, I was excited to see it show up. Um, Mark, I just have one question for tonight anyway, I'm sure we'll have some more as we review this a little bit more...
Sure.
...thoroughly. The fifteen day, um, I'm just, so you're, you're issuing it on the eighth, um, any addendums have to be out by the fifth, and then final proposals on the twentieth?
Yeah.
Is that a timeframe that, um, you know, you were able to, I guess, check with other communities who have already been past this point, seems to work?
Yeah, I think we, I think we borrowed that from some other communities of the timeframes that they had, so, um, you know, we're going off similar RFPs, so I don't think it'll be brand new for any of the administrators that are out there. Um, we've kind of taken pieces and parts, it's, uh, some of what Nicerda put out as a template, um, some of, um, you know, what, uh, most recently Brighton, uh, Pittsburgh and, uh, Aronacoid put together, we took some elements from theirs, um, and there was another community, so it's, it's kind of a compilation of, of theirs, so I don't think it'll be brand new information for any of the, the administrators that are out there. Um, I only know of, you know, three major ones that are, that are in the market right now, uh, so I don't think it'll be a, a, a big lift for them, I think there are similar things that they've seen before. Um, so then, giving them, you know, a couple of weeks to get our, you know, their technical comments back to us, uh, we'll collect them through the clerk's office, um, and then Sarah, myself, you know, can respond, we'll get that back to them, and then that gives them, you know, the fifteen days to respond. So, I think it's similar to what we've seen, you know, other communities do, and, and I don't think we're asking things that are, um, you know, much different than what have been in RFPs in the past.
Okay, great, thanks, yeah, there, there, there's a lot of information they need to provide, gratefully so, and I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that timeframe, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a link, the RFP, um, you know, we're trying to be thorough, but, you know, I think it's, uh, you know, something they've dealt with before, so I don't think it'll be, you know, too much of an ask.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Great.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, any further comments? So, tonight, uh, tonight, uh, was an informational item, there was, uh, no particular action other than to make sure that it, uh, was entered, uh, into the record formally here at the work session. Uh, we'll ask staff, unless I hear otherwise, uh, our plan will be at the twenty-third work session, we'll put it on as an action item. Uh, between now and then, I would just ask the board, any questions, please reach out to Mark, Sarah, and, uh, I would just ask, uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, copying all the board, so if a board member has a particular question, uh, send that into, into Mark or Sarah, uh, copy the board, and then we can, everybody can see the response back, uh, because chances are, uh, everyone might, or many of us might have a similar question that we're looking for an answer to. We'll bring it, uh, back, uh, on the twenty-third, and, unless there is some major concerns, issues, pushback, uh, we would push that a little bit further, but, uh, right now, uh, this is a schedule we think, uh, could work, and, uh, for us to move forward with, and, uh, if we can follow those dates and that works, uh, that, uh, helps us as we, uh, ready, uh, for the two thousand and twenty-one, uh, year, uh, as we move forward with the next steps, uh, for, uh, CCA in Penfield. Okay? All right, uh, board, uh, seeing no further items, uh, on the agenda, and no further items to come...